Good evening. City of Bastrop preserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or call it executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 5:30. We have a full day. I'm calling this meeting to order. The next thing on the agenda is citizen comments, but I wanted to go ahead and take the opportunity to do the pledge of allegiance to both our flags. If you'll all rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honorably Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. I know we didn't have a schedule, but I'm going to ask Reverend Bob Long if he'd come up and give the invocation for us, please.
If you want, just pray.
Yes, sir, just pray.
Lord, you know the proceedings here tonight, and we ask that you guide them by your Holy Spirit so that we would do what's right and righteous before you. We pray for this council. We pray for the mayor. We pray for everybody in the audience as the community of Bastrop is put together here tonight and welded together in one mind, in one accord, led by your Spirit. Now, Lord, we just trust you for this meeting. We trust you for the outcome. We pray for your will to be done, and we just thank you for Bastrop, Texas. We're here for Bastrop. We thank you for a beautiful day. We thank that you blessed our community, a growing community, and we ask that you give wisdom to those who make decisions, especially our council, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Long. Go ahead and be seated. We will now go ahead and proceed to citizen comments. Since there's a lot of people here, I'm going to read the requirements under citizen comments. At this time, a three-minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic. Anyone in attendance wishing to address the council must complete a citizen comment card. In accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, if a citizen discusses any item not on the agenda, city council cannot discuss issues raised or make any decision at this time. Instead, city council is limited to making a statement of specific factual information or a recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry. Issues may be referred to city manager for research and future action. It is not the intention of the city of Bastrop to provide a public forum for the embarrassment or demeaning of any individual or group. Neither is it the intention of the council to allow a member of the public to slur the performance honest and integrity of the council as a body, or any member or members of the council individually or collectively, or members of the city staff. Accordingly, profane, insulting, and threatening language directed toward the council or any person in the council's presence will not be tolerated. I appreciate y'all's indulgence. I'm going to try to hit everybody. I have lots of pieces of paper here under citizen comments, and the first citizen comment is Mr. Mel Cooper. If you will come up to the podium, state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes, sir.
My name is... There you go. My name is Mel Cooper. Address is 603 Shiloh Road in St. Bastrop, Texas. And I'm here on behalf of Bastrop County Conservatives primarily. Public officials have certain responsibilities and obligations, and they open themselves up to scrutiny of their private lives if their private lives impact the position they hold. In a case that we all know about, it did. This is the life of a politician and anyone serving in public office. Everyone here knows what's taking place. I'm not going to rehash it. It's now been established that a conflict of interest existed, and there were documented issues regarding the investigation. Further before running for office, a discussion was held with the mayor on the same topic. We're all human. We make mistakes. I think forgiveness needs to be part of this. But the difference in outcomes is how those mistakes or issues are handled after they're identified or discovered. In the opinion of Bastrop County Conservatives, the response to this issue has not gone well. Actions have consequences. Given what's taken place, Bastrop County Conservatives believes that the proper action is for the mayor to step down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person scheduled to speak is Bill Peterson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Bill Peterson. I reside at 508 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, Bastrop, Texas. And everyone that knows me, I'm a man of brief words. I say what I'm going to say, and I'll sit down. But I've served on councils in the past, and there's been bickering. I've seen all the bickering, all of the conflicts between council members, and I thought when I served on the council, we had kind of resolved all that. But with all that bickering back and forth, it doesn't solve anything for the city council or for the city. And that kind of behavior is being self-serving and not serving the interests of the city of Bastrop. I just hope that we can look, kind of look at each other, look in the mirror at each other, and I hope that we can all go and read John 8:7 through 11, which reads in part, "Let him without sin among you be the first to throw a stone." I believe the reprimand was enough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person signed up to speak is Deborah Jones.
Hello, my name is Deborah Jones. I live at 1606 Bacon Street. Several years ago, we overhauled the process for hearing ethics complaints. Several of us who were part of that process are present. Keep in mind that the council voted unanimously to move forward with this complaint. To single out one person, to attack one council person in a unanimous undertaking is inappropriate. These five members should be given the opportunity to act accordingly.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person scheduled to speak is Carrie Kaler. You have three minutes. State your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Carrie Kaler. I live at 1408 Wilson Street, and I'm here today for two reasons. My first is to express concern over the resolutions at hand, which effectively strip Mayor Nelson of his elective duties. I'm first curious as to whether these resolutions are intended to remain in effect beyond Mayor Nelson's tenure, which would disincentivize anyone with leadership and vision from seeking the position, or whether these measures are simply meant as a way to meet out punishment. The Bastrop Ethics Board has already ruled, and process dictates, any further action should fall to the community. If the community supports a recall election and it were to pass, then that would be proper process, but up until that happens, I believe that this mayor and any future mayor should be allowed to perform their duties as not only elected to do, but as instructed by the community. This leads to my second reason for being here, which is my concern over the current concentration of power in this community among fewer and fewer hands. This is improper. It does not serve us as citizens, and it has not gone unnoticed. It's time for this salacious, patent-place business to be over and for city council to get back to the more boring business of balancing our budget and fixing our streets. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person scheduled to speak is Tim Van Allen. State your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Tim Van Allen, 2106 Hill Street, Bastrop, Texas. Mayor Nelson, pro temp, John Kirkland, Cynthia Meyer, Kevin Plunkett, Cheryl Lee, Jimmy Crouch, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. What y'all do every day is a difficult task, and I appreciate the effort that y'all are putting in to improve our city. Mayor Nelson, I voted for you, and you were a very nice gentleman, a very kind gentleman. I was really shocked to hear some of the things that came forward and grieved to hear of the outcome. This is very, very difficult for me. When I heard of the ethics hearing overseen by Judge Dugan and the investigation, and that the council was confirmed that these things, this information was accurate, and then they handed down a reprimand, which is the strongest that the Ethics Committee can hand down, I was even more aggrieved. When something is done wrong, somebody can take two positions. You can either choose to be humble before that, or you can choose to be prideful and dig in. It appears that the latter has taken place. As a result of this, I'm personally, as a citizen, I'm having to take an action where I'm recanting my vote. I'm signing a petition for recall, and I'm taking place in part of that, something I never thought I would ever be responsible for saying in a public forum. This does not mean that I don't have an utmost respect for your position, for all of your positions, and I'm extreme gratitude for the time and the effort that all of you put into this. But I feel like, as a citizen, it becomes my duty to express this grief in an open forum, and I pray often for all of you. Thank you for your service to our community. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Next person scheduled to speak is Linda Curtis.
My name is Linda Curtis. I'm going to read my comments to make sure I'm very clear, and they're going to be posted at our websites at Independent Texans PAC and the League of Independent Voters of Texas. I live on South Shore Road, just outside the city. Our Bastrop members and supporters live both inside and outside the city of Bastrop. I got involved in the situation unfolding here when we saw the fast-tracking of the Gateway Project behind Buc-E's. Our wheelhouse is open government, citizens' right to petition, protection of water and land resources, and development done right, that is, growth paying for itself. An astute former mayor of another city, a conservative Republican, mind you, asked me the other day if this fight that's going on in Bastrop about Mayor Lyle Nelson is about development. My answer was an unequivocal yes. Aren't most decisions in most cities about development? We discussed the issue of conservatism. What is conservatism? And is it not about fiscal restraint, limited government, and the respect for local control and rule of law, not vigilantism? Those who are trying to force Lyle Nelson to resign appear to be using incorrect or incomplete information that could not only damage Lyle, but the office of the mayor itself. I would urge that everyone calm down and take the time to examine the facts. So far, there was a report by one of the three outside attorneys the city has been paying for, Sarah Glazer, who said she found no evidence of abuse of public funds in relation to Lyle Nelson. There was another report, a forensic audit, I believe by Haney and Company. I received the preliminary draft summary today that doesn't even mention Lyle Nelson or the office of mayor. Now, there's a rumor that the Texas Rangers are investigating. Will the recallers wait for the Texas Rangers? I haven't heard... I have heard that there are members of the city council who are supporting this recall. So far, only Lindy Larson's name is on the recall website. Please understand that recall is for citizens, not for politicians, to get back at their perceived political enemies.
Thank you, ma'am. It's a business meeting, and I appreciate the passion, but let's please control the Next person scheduled to speak is Barbara Caldwell.
I'm Barbara Caldwell, and I'm here to ask Lyle Nelson to resign as mayor. Lyle has been a friend of mine and my husband's for quite some time, and in fact, Lyle, we blockwalked for you. We did everything we could to get you elected. We encouraged everyone that we knew to vote for you, and then you were brought up before the Ethics Committee, of which I'm a member of. The Ethics Committee, I don't know if any of you know, they're some of the finest people in our community, and we take our job very, very seriously. And when the event came up to the Ethics Committee, we knew that there were things about you that we didn't want to discuss. It didn't concern us, specifically the affair. That was not what we were talking about. It's not what we were judging on. We were judging on your interference with an ongoing investigation, and that's all we looked at. Our committee made it clear from the very beginning that we were not going to talk about anything else. We never once discussed or even mentioned the affair. We stuck to the task of only investigating your interference of the investigation. We voted unanimously that, yes, you had interfered, and we gave you the harshest penalty that we could. We all wanted you to be removed, but we couldn't do that. We all felt very strongly about your involvement of the investigation. And I spoke to Lyle about a week ago, and again, I ask you, Lyle, please step down. You're not who I want to represent me. I don't want you at ribbon cuttings. I don't want you welcoming new businesses in our community. I don't want you saying prayers at events here in Bastrop. I don't want you at the car show. I don't want you in anything. I would like for you to quietly fade into the shadows and let us heal.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person scheduled to speak is Jeremy Story. I'm trying to read the writing. Yes, that's who I thought it was.
Well, you know, Jesus really spoke with both grace and truth, and the truth we know, the mayor has admitted that he had an extramarital affair and that he lied to the city council. And I think that was honorable, that you admitted that. And we also know the truth is that the Ethics Committee has decided that you interfered with the investigation. And then the other truth is that you have exercised your desire and choice and right to not release the documents that would help give any further information if there's any financial issues. And I think you have that choice you can make. And the problem, though, is if you choose to do that, if that's the truth, all those things are true, we know, because that's just what you have owned to and other people have here on the Ethics Committee, then that would necessitate, I believe, unfortunately, you resigning, because you're not willing to release those documents, and also because of the mission that you already made. The grace, though, is that we can exhibit as a community, is that there's no difference between, you know, Mayor Nelson and the rest of us, right? We all sin. We all do things that are wrong. And so while we encourage you, Mr. Mayor, to consider resigning for the good of the community, and really honestly, what I've been praying for is for your good, at the same time, we recognize that none of us are any better. We're all in the same boat, and that we need God's help because we all do things that are wrong. And so my hope is that as a community, we can both encourage you to take the continued path of humility, as you already showed in part by owning to that first step, while at the same time, offering to be helpful and a blessing to you and not a curse to you. I would say to you personally, because I'm a fellow sinner, equal, but we all are, I'd be glad to help you, to encourage you, to pray with you, to bless you, and to encourage you as you continue to walk down the road of humility. But it seems, based on the current choices that have been made, that you would need to step down, just by your own admissions, not because I'm angry at you. I'm not. I've advocated for you and for people to give you second chances and third chances many times in this matter, and I've prayed for you and your wife and your family and your friendships. I would just encourage you to consider continuing to take that road of humility and consider resigning so that you would be blessed and also the community would be, and that we would all stand together in unity to support and encourage you, knowing that we're all the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next person scheduled to speak is Stuart Bridges.
Mayor, Council, thanks for having me here today. I've got a few questions here. They're all rhetorical, so I'm not expecting answers. This is more for the group here and my fellow neighbors. First off, how can you justify a recall position without any positive proof, undeniable truth? Wouldn't we prefer to wait for this truth to come out before we start any recall position? According to the Glazer report, no evidence of wrongdoing was discovered. It reads, and I quote, "The mayor denied any knowledge of misuse of public funds, and my investigation to date uncovered no evidence otherwise," end quote. How much public money has been spent on attorneys thus far, and how much do you project is going to be spent going forward? How is this recall tied to the Gateway Project? Mr. Crouch. Mr. Crouch, you admitted to ethics violations and was reprimanded. Was a recall ever discussed in that particular item? Mr. Kirkland, as Mr. Scott witnessed last Monday night, you approached citizens at a local restaurant on behalf of the city council beyond unprofessional and unethical. Is this even legal, considering you are the mayor pro temp? What is the rushed judgment without any proof of wrongdoing? Is it looming, election, maybe? We need proof. You're not doing this to us, Mayor... You're not doing this to Mayor Nelson. You're doing it to us. The right to petition is for the citizen, not the politicians, as Linda stated earlier. We are paying attention. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have almost skipped some of these. We have some people who wish to speak, who wish to have their voices recorded but not heard, and they are specific to, just in case you're here, they're specific to agenda items. We will wait till those agenda items. The next person scheduled to speak is Debbie Moore. As I've been reminded, please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Debbie Moore. I live at 1306 Church Street in Bastrop. I have more questions than I have a statement tonight, I believe. But the first thing I want to ask you is, what is it on the agenda that necessitated this hastily-called special meeting of the Bastrop City Council at a day that's not normally a council day and an hour earlier than it's ever been? I don't understand. Another question I have concerns Item 2A, and it deals with the trail connectivity at Mayfest Park, making it a priority in the new park's master plan. Have all priority projects been chosen? Have any? Although I could not identify in the packet where the trail would begin and end, I do know that the chair of the Parks Board has a project being built nearby. Should that have been discussed? I'm not sure. But in days when you want to be transparent and open, I think it might have been a good thing. The city charter does say that the council may set its rules of procedure. However, resolutions to be considered today limit not only the length of time the mayor and members may speak on a subject unless the council agrees, but also eliminates the mayor from setting agendas and reading proclamations, among many other things. Why? I want items discussed as long as necessary, and I don't want a council telling the mayor or anyone else when they have to be quiet. The second resolution continues to denigrate Mayor Nelson because he received a reprimand from the Ethics Commission. The mayor contended that he did not do anything wrong. The difference in him and in another member of the council is that the other member of the council admitted to violating the ethics ordinance and consented to a mediated settlement. Not only that, he's got a six-figure lawsuit filed against him in district court. I'm not denigrating anybody. I'm just taking the truth. Why haven't we heard anything about that other ethics violation? Mr. Kirkland's introducing himself as mayor pro temp when out soliciting signatures on a recall petition for the mayor. I don't know about you, but that introduction would make me think that the entire council is authorizing him to do so. Have you? The charter clearly states that the city manager must live in the city limits. In extending time that the city manager has before moving into the city, the council is clearly not following a mandate of the charter, a charter that was adopted by a voter, the citizens of Bastrop, not by the city council. Why is that okay? Rules should apply to everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam City Secretary, do we have anybody else that is scheduled to speak? I don't want to leave anybody out.
Not for citizen communication.
Great. Thank you so much. We will move on to presentations. On the mayor's report in the 3A, I want to take care of something that we attempted to take care of last council meeting, but she decided to go to Florida on her vacation, so I was unable to give this to you. She just celebrated her 22nd birthday, I believe. Is that correct? Thank you so much. And the only other thing that I want to mention is the fact that we had our... And I'm going to turn to our city manager to pronounce it correctly, because I talk Spanish like I'm from East Texas. Would you please pronounce what occurred this past weekend for us?
Festival de la Cultura.
Exactly. It was an outstanding event, and hopefully we'll have many more. I do want to call special attention to one of our fine corporate and community partners, Carlos Liriano. He secured a $200,000 grant from Toyota to establish a traumatic head injury clinic here in Bastrop to take care of not only our kids, but also our veterans. Well deserved. I will reserve other reports from the mayor until later. Is there anyone on council that wishes to have a council member report? Councilmember Lee?
Yes, I too just want to thank everyone for organizing this past weekend's event. I don't know if we got a head count. It looked like there were 5,000 or more people there, but everyone was having a wonderful time. The music was wonderful. The setup was amazing, the hard work, and amount of people it took to pull that together. I feel like in a short amount of time, but I know it's been talked about for months. Kudos. Well done. Kudos, well done, looking forward to it next year. And then the only other thing is, I wasn't here at last meeting, so I don't know. I heard on the street that we have a new assistant city manager, so I wanted to congratulate. I guess you're no longer chief, you are the assistant city manager on that role. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. No one else wishes to make a comment? Then we will go on to agenda item 4A. Consider action to approve Resolution Number 2024-50 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, making trail connectivity at Mayfest Park a priority in the recently adopted Parks Master Plan. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Contrary to the belief that there is anything nefarious going on about the trail system, council approved the Mayfest Park improvements over six months ago and allocated an additional $260,000 or so for those Mayfest Park improvements. The staff has worked diligently, they have brought in a lot of the work themselves, we have done a great deal of the work ourselves, and so now it's time to increase access to Mayfest Park. Has nothing to do with the Gateway Project. In fact, the Gateway Project will be completely revamped. We heard the property owners, we heard what they said, there will be no 12-story building of the Gateway Project. So, thank you very much. Has nothing to do with the Gateway Project, but rather furthering what is already approved in the Parks Master Plan that was adopted by this council last month as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, the city manager has laid this item out. Do we have any questions for? Councilmember Lee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, one of the questions I had was, why do we have to prove to make this a priority? My understanding was the parks, Parks was creating a priority list based off of the master plan that they were going to bring back to us down the road. To my, we haven't received that priority list. So for me, I would want to know, like, what are the priorities? What are the other priorities to determine whether or not this should be a priority?
So, Councilmember Lee, that's separate and apart. You guys approved a certain amount of money for improvements at Mayfest. So this is overflowing those approval of dollars to Mayfest to begin to clear the areas for a trail connection to the park.
And I get that, but I think saying, making it a priority, kind of threw people, me off, and other people that called me, saying we're making it a priority. Because to me, if there's equipment failing in other parks, that would be a priority. That would be top of the list. So I get what you're saying, that makes sense. I think the way that it was worded kind of confused the community as to why are we making it a priority, at least from what I received, the input I received from the community. So that is separate, we will be getting a list.
Separate and apart, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Seeing no other indications, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Crouch.
Second.
I have a motion, but Councilmember Plunkett, a second. But Councilmember Meyer, any further discussion? Seeing indicated, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Thank you, council. We'll move on to item 4B. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2024-45 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving and authorizing the issuance of a request for proposal for solid waste and recycling services as attached in Exhibit A, providing for repeal and providing an effective date. Mr. Rosales.
Mayor, Council. This was, last time we had an error on the printing in attachment, the RFP was not attached. So this time we've attached it, it's in your council packet. During the last meeting, we also talked and discussed about two items. We added on page 25 of the agenda packet, we added the no contact, no lobbying, as per the request. On page 41, we added the proposal evaluation section, which added the site visit per Councilmember Crouch. Otherwise, the RFP schedule is scheduled to go out, be noticed tomorrow and released tomorrow, and then we'll have our first mandatory meeting on May 7th. RFPs will be due May 30th at noon, and then we'll go through the evaluations, we'll bring it back to council in July of 2024, and then services will be transitioned during July to August, and then the commencement of service will begin August 31st. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Assistant City Manager? Seeing none indicated, I will entertain a motion. Oh, I didn't see your light on, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lee.
So, I emailed the city manager because we had done a survey previously to get input from the community about whether or not they would want to pay more in pricing and cost by doing an RFP and finding another company. She has sent email that I think to me, she mentioned as I walked in, I'm not sure if she sent that to everyone, but I was also wondering, I would still be interested to know, because if I recall, we didn't get a good, we didn't get a good response from that survey. I think it's, that was 2022 when we did that. So in conjunction with RFP, I would be interested to maybe see if we could do, put that survey back out throughout this RFP process. We have more people in the city, we have more development in the city, maybe we'll get a better response. So by the time we do hear it, we will have some more input from the city as to what they would want.
We can do that, you're right. Their survey was out in 2022. There were 67 respondents who responded to the survey, it was online for about a month. 63 of the 67 people surveyed said that keeping a low overall cost was not as important as additional services, and they cited additional recycling and/or other green measures that would be important, such as composting.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further comments, questions for City Manager? I will entertain a motion.
I had a question.
Oh, didn't see your light, sir.
Sorry, I just kind of snuck that in. City Manager, can you tell us how long it's been since we've had an RFP out for the trash collection? And would you explain to us the procedures for standard city services and how often we go out for RFP for large things like this, just to make sure that we're getting fair pricing and competitive bids for everything?
Sure. It was BS before Sylvia, that's what I can tell you. It's been longer than five years, and appropriate municipal practice is to go change auditors, change a lot of important big-ticket items every five years, to one, ensure that you're still being competitive, keeping the taxpayers' best interest at heart, and making sure that the services provided are still what the residents would like.
Thank you. Seeing no other interest in comments or questions indicated, I do have before taking motion. I do have two speakers on this agenda item. State your name and address, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council. David Butler, 127 Kial Court here in Bastrop. Actually just moved here this year. Lived here several years ago, and my wife and I decided to move back to the city. Been loving that, but myself in particular, I'm actually speaking on behalf of Central Texas Refuge LLC, now part of Republic Services, actually. And really excited to be here, because I think this is a good opportunity for not only our business, but also for me personally, to be, you know, continue to become more involved here in the city. It's one thing my wife and I were really excited about, is being able to become, you know, really invested in the community here and become part of what this town is really trying to continue to be and continue to grow and become. Myself here, my history with CTR has been really fun. My grandfather was one of the original five founders, back in 1981, started and grew that company up as the original general manager for the business. I actually got to be the last general manager for the company as Central Texas Refuge LLC. So it's really cool for me as a third generation of the original ownership, really get to carry it all the way to now what it will become in the future. I actually have been able to stay on as a general manager with Republic Services going forward, and again, I really view this as an awesome opportunity for our business. We've got a really great team of people that have been with the company going all the way back. I've got one guy, James Hoffman, has been with the company since 1983. He's a really awesome guy, and again, really passionate about our business. Our team has continued through the acquisition, and we actually have the same leadership team that we've had in place since we were Central Texas Refuge. And I really look forward to the opportunity on this RFP to put a bid forward, not only to offer the same local great service that I think that we can offer, but also some of the opportunity for the expanded service that I think it sounds like the residents, you know, are looking for. So again, I really appreciate the consideration for this item in particular, and appreciate y'all's time. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you so much. Next person scheduled to speak on this agenda item is Stacy Savage. State your name and address, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My address is on the speaker's form that I gave to you. So my name is Stacy Savage. I am the founder and CEO of Zero Waste Strategies, a local environmental consulting firm specializing in waste reduction. We've worked with businesses such as Dell, AT&amp;T, Apple, and Nestle, local governments such as cities of Austin and Fort Collins, and institutions such as Boston University. Now, you may remember me from the presentation I gave way back in December, speaking with you all about zero waste, recycling, food waste composting, and the economic benefits of waste reduction programs. Today, I'm speaking with you on the city's new RFQ, seeking bids on citywide waste and recycling services for residents and businesses. I would like to first address the thoroughness of this RFQ to service the needs of the city's residents and some businesses. I do believe the terms of the RFQ will allow for the minimum necessary standards to keep a community clean. There are, however, some points that I would like for you to consider before a vote to approve in July. So as far as data and technology, unfortunately, there are many service providers that have an unsavory reputation of hoarding their data on materials hauling and processing. On behalf of the residential and business communities of Bastrop, the bid reviewers and council should give strong consideration to the proposers, who are open and transparent with the data they collect on the city's waste and recycling programs. The city's administrators should be able to receive accurate and in-depth data from haulers that can be processed for public release, residential and business education, and building a local culture that takes pride in reducing waste and cross-contamination, as well as increasing their recycling rates. This could spur healthy competition among residents and businesses as a collective to either meet or beat the previous month's recycling rate, which could lead to the city seeing a year-over-year improvement on waste reduction to landfills, which could save money on landfill and disposal costs. The second point is container swapping. So every vendor has its own style of carts, dumpsters, color coding for correct materials that are accepted in each type of the cart, and educational labels, logos. Currently, the city uses blue carts, but on page 37, just something I was a bit confused about, Section 3F, it's page 37 of the agenda packet for today, it's Section 3F, it indicates that the city does not wish to use blue carts anymore. Though the city has sold discretion over which color palette is used, I would encourage keeping the same color scheme to reduce the amount of confusion among neighbors and businesses, and reduce the amount of cross-contamination issues this might cause. This confusion could give residents and businesses an out to recycling improperly, and if the city doesn't do its due diligence to increase understanding of how the program should work, they can just say, oh, well, somebody else will deal with it. The contamination issues that haulers and processors deal with start with us, the consumer and the customer. So it starts with us upstream so that they don't have to deal with it downstream. So I will quickly remind folks that if a hauler's recycling load is about 25%, 35% contaminated.
About 30 seconds.
The load's going to go to landfill. So we need to be able to recycle more properly. Public education, the crux of government programs, of course, is proper public education. I strongly encourage that the proposal reviewers and council place a higher regard on the proposal that can demonstrate the most robust community education outreach and empowerment campaign to foster inclusivity. And the stronger the community outreach and empowerment is, the stronger the recycling participation rates become, meaning residents and businesses will understand how to recycle properly to reduce cross-contamination, which gives the processor higher quality of materials that are unsoiled.
We appreciate you, Pat. Sorry, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to get into cost, too.
I got you. I got you. And one correction, it's an RFP, not an RFQ, for those of you who are listening. Seeing no, Councilmember, seeing no other lights, I think we had a motion, but I couldn't figure out who made the second. Did Mr. Plunkett make a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
There we go.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have Councilmember Lee, I'd like to make a comment.
Well, just a couple of questions after hearing. So we are doing like a standard, the language is standard for education, and the last meeting, several meetings, we have talked about Councilmember Crouch specifically has talked about education more for recycling. Is there a way that we can do a markup on the gross fees to enhance that education piece?
Well, first, I'd like to see what we receive, and then we can certainly score and incentivize those who have a larger incentive piece.
Okay. And then when you, when the mandatory meeting takes place, just so I understand how that process works. So there'll be a mandatory meeting, we'll be explaining to anyone interested in completing the RFP what that looks like and what we're looking for. Do we get, as council, a list of who attends that mandatory meeting, or do we not know anything until after the applications are reviewed and you present?
No, all of it is public record. There is a no contact in the RFP, though. So you'll get a list of who attended, but you can't contact them.
Right. But we can research, we can Google.
You can absolutely, you can absolutely research, yes.
So we'll get a list of that, then you guys will be reviewing, and then in July, you'll come back to us with a presentation on what your choices are.
Yes.
Yes, but in between there, we will schedule a site visit with you, with y'all. Y'all will participate in the site visit as well as the staff.
Wonderful, thank you.
And to note, the, we'll add, there was a, supposed to be, it's dark blue, so it's dark blue and black containers. They can pick their colors, but the dark blue and the black tend to heat the, heat the cart up, which then continues decomposition, which then the can will catch fire, and thus providing hazard. So I'll add the dark blue. It was in there, I'm not sure why we removed it.
All right, thanks for the explanation. Is that it? Councilmember Lee? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We will move on to item 4C. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2024-48 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the rules of procedure, including parliamentary procedure and agenda order, authorizes the city manager to execute and providing for an effective date. This item was submitted by Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland to lay out.
Point of order, aren't there supposed to be two council members signing on? Did we leave a name off, or who was the second?
Councilmember Meyer.
Okay, and is that the same for the next agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We just failed to put it on the agenda? Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
So Mayor, at what point should we do the citizens' comments?
I think once the item is laid out, then we can go to the citizen comments.
So the rules of procedure say motion first. And so I'm motion to approve R-2024-48.
Second. As the presenting officer, I would like to hear the item laid out as is prescribed.
The, I'm not suggesting that we immediately go to a vote. I think that there's probably some discussion that would be had, which is why I asked about in what order you would want to do the citizens' comments.
So you're saying you do not want to lay, you have nothing to lay out to describe what you're looking, what you submitted. So we will move to citizen comments at this point in time. Madam City Secretary, do you have anybody who wishes to speak on 4C?
No, ma'am.
I have, I have some citizen comments here. I'm un- I'm unsure, they didn't indicate whether they wanted to speak or not, but Jody Smith signed up to speak on 4C and 4D. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jody Smith. I live on Main Street in the North End, and I am admitted to practice law in the state of Texas, and I'm commenting tonight in my individual capacity as an attorney who practices on issues of public law and as a Bastrop resident voter and taxpayer. So when I was admitted to the Texas bar, I took an oath to support the laws of Texas, and that's really similar to the oath that each of you took when you became a public official in the city of Bastrop. So I'm offering my comments tonight in the spirit of assistance to help us both honor those oaths that we took to support the laws of the state of Texas. I'm also not speaking to the political dimensions of these resolutions or anything related to the current mayor. I'm addressing only the legal concerns that these resolutions raise. So it's probably a narrower lens than some of the other commenters might raise. So as you likely understand, these two proposed resolutions change the office of the mayor permanently, regardless of who the mayor is right now. And when someone else is elected mayor, the new mayor is still affected by these changes. These are permanent changes that affect the office of the mayor. And City Council does have the discretion to make political choices and policy choices, but that discretion stops at the point that the policy choices conflict with state law or the city charter. So those potential legal conflicts are my focus in my comments tonight. And my goal is to prevent the city from taking action that will open the city up to a lawsuit and require taxpayer money for, to defend an action that is entirely avoidable. So taken together, the proposed changes create a possible conflict with, it's Section 3.08 of the city charter, and there are three provisions there that I think are at issue. One is that the mayor shall preside over the meeting of the council. Two, the mayor shall also be recognized as the chief presiding officer of the council, of the city. And three, the mayor shall also be recognized as the head of the city for all ceremonial purposes. So not all of the proposed changes are legally problematic, so I'll just highlight the ones that I think create the biggest issues for your attention on the resolution for procedural changes, that is, the 4C item, number four, Article Four on the agenda issues, and then 4.4 on presentations. Those are the two that raise issues with all three of Section 3.08 of the charter that I have raised for your consideration. And then on the mayor resolution, there are three main problem areas. That's Section Four on speaking roles at city functions, seven, appointment to external and internal boards, and three, I'm sorry, eight legislative advocacy. Additionally, the mayoral contact information online is a potential violation of citizens' rights. So thank you for considering my analysis and comments tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions now or at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person scheduled to speak is Joe Grady, I'm sorry, it's 4D, I apologize. I have Judith Hoover, who signed up to speak on, or signed up for 4C and 4D. She is in support of this item. She does not wish to speak. I have Lyndy Larson, who is signed up in support of this item. She does not wish to speak. I have Carolyn Smith, who has signed up in opposition to this item. She does not wish to speak. I think the next ones are in the next item, 4D. We have listened to citizen comments. The Mayor Protem has opted not to lay out this action as submitted. Councilmember Lee, you have some comments?
I do, thank you, Mayor. So we're in, I'm referencing 4C, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Amending the Rules of Procedure Including Parliamentary Procedure and Agenda Order. So I am in opposition of this resolution. I feel like, in regards to the proclamation, so I'll start with the proclamation. In regards to the proclamation, that is an honor, that organizations and residents and churches, individuals that run any type of event, or they want to honor their loved one, it is an honor to receive a proclamation from the mayor, from a state rep, from the governor. It is an honor. That honor helps them in their organizational networking. It helps them, in some cases, get funding. It's a recognition that they have received from a dignitary in the community. That proclamation signed by the city manager does not carry the same weight. The mayor does proclamations here on the dais, but he's also invited in the community to church events, to, we're doing something for a mural project the city council approved, and the person that's being honored for that wants the mayor to read a proclamation. I don't see why that should change. As someone has stated, it's part of his responsibilities per our charter, that the mayor do those ceremonious types of events. So I don't agree with the signing and reading of the proclamation, not opposed to the photo, not sure why that has to be put in language when we could just say, hey, Mayor, we want to take a photo, too. I don't know why that has to be outlined, but not opposed to that, if that wants, they want to add that to the rules of procedure. But as far as the proclamation, it does not carry the same weight if a city manager signs that document. It is an honorable thing to have a proclamation read, and I think that that should continue to be with the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I would just ask that in light of the previous, the citizen comments, if we could hear from Alan, did any of those, I know you've looked at the resolutions and believe they're legal, if I'm not mistaken, but did any of those concerns trigger anything that would give you concern?
No, Councilmember Plunkett, members of the council, Mayor, I don't share the previous speaker's legal concerns. It's my opinion that the resolutions that are offered do not conflict with the Code of Ordinances, city charter, or state law.
Thank you.
Councilmember Plunkett, if I might add for, for your reminder, whatever action this council takes does not carry on to the next council. One council cannot encumber another council. An ordinance undoes an ordinance, a resolution undoes a resolution.
Right, so it would bind over to the next council, but the next council would have every right to repeal it, of course, yes.
Thank you for the clarification. All righty, we have heard the public comments. We've, I've read the item. It's not been laid out, as I guess we'll now entertain a motion.
So we had a motion and a second earlier.
Okay.
He may not have recognized it, so I would move to approve if that would help.
Have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett?
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Protem Kirkland. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
So I have in front of me the letter of reprimand that was emailed to me from the Board of Ethics, signed by Chris Dugan, and says, Lionel Nelson, Mayor, City of Bastrop, Mayor Nelson, pursuant to 115018B3 of the Bastrop Code of Ethics, the City of Bastrop Board of Ethics issues this letter of reprimand, and in support thereof finds the following. You were alleged to have violated the section of the City of Bastrop Code of Ethics by interfering with an administrative investigation. An evidentiary hearing was conducted on April 10th at which you were present, represented by an attorney, and afforded the opportunity to present evidence and cross-examine the complainant. At the conclusion of the evidentiary hearing, the Board of Ethics unanimously determined that based on the evidence submitted at the hearing, you violated this section of the Bastrop Code of Ethics by abusing your position to interfere with an administrative investigation. After considering the severity and intent of your conduct, the Board of Ethics voted to issue a letter of reprimand. And this is signed by our chair, Chris Dugan. The theme for the Ethics Board finding is that the mayor lied. The mayor lied when he said he was not a city official and used that to not produce records for the investigation and the financial issues at Visit Bastrop. The mayor lied. He lied when he said that he had never discussed the Visit Bastrop budget with a former CEO before being sworn in as mayor. He lied when he was asked about the nature of his relationship with a former CEO. He lied when he was interviewed by the investigator. He lied 15 times in the first 15 minutes of that interview. The mayor lied. He denied being in an inappropriate relationship with a former CEO of Visit Bastrop until the city IT department discovered 232 pages of intimate text messages between the two of them on her work iPad. The mayor lied. His attorney in the ethics hearing stipulated that the facts I just presented were true. That just simply means that he agreed that they were true for the sake of the discussion.
You can't, you can't speak on what my attorney said. It's hearsay, sir, so I'm going to, you can continue with this assault, but please, if you're going to talk about lying, make sure you provide the truth in there.
The facts I presented said that the mayor lied. The mayor lied over and over and over. He lied from the beginning, even before becoming mayor. His lies secured political support that put him in the mayor's seat. We shouldn't be sitting here next to him. We should be sitting next to the Honorable Doc Jackson or the Honorable Deborah Jones. The mayor lied. We shouldn't have to spend two money, spend money on two attorneys for the ethics complaint. The mayor lied. We shouldn't have to have this meeting today to discuss that the mayor lied. As city leaders, we maintain a fiduciary duty to the citizens of this city. That means that we have to take care of our residents and their public money with greater care than we do ourselves or our own money. By purposely interfering into the investigation into misuse of public funds, the mayor has breached his fiduciary duty because he lied. When council directed me to file an ethics complaint against the mayor, that made me the public face of that effort. That was an action of this deliberative body, and I was doing the job that I was directed to do. Because of the public role that I had, I had residents reach out and ask me how they could initiate a recall effort. Because I'm someone that's focused on the details, I researched and answered that question from a kind of, what does the law say? What does the state law say? What does the charter of the city of Bastrop say? And there I sat with a recall form and didn't have any idea if it would have traction with people, so I tested it. I walked to three different streets, three portions of streets in Bastrop. I knocked on every door with a registered voter. The response was unequivocal. 97% of the people I spoke with supported recall. Such unity of opinion is rare and speaks volumes. It underscores the breach of trust felt by our community. In three afternoons, I secured 7.5% of the approximately 1,500 signatures required for a successful recall. In summary, Mayor Nelson has breached his fiduciary duty. He's been reprimanded by the Board of Ethics. He came to office under false pretenses. 97% of the citizens I've spoken with support a recall, and he lies. In my opinion, these resolutions take action to contain the damage he has done and continuing to do, and that's why I propose these weak mayor reforms for the city of Bastrop.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I appreciate the comments. I would, hopefully, they'd be a little bit more truthful, but they are what they are. Councilmember Lee?
So I was really hoping and praying that coming into this council meeting, we would be willing to listen to each other's point of view. These resolutions were written and handed to us for last week's council meeting, which I did not attend, and my understanding is they weren't appropriately submitted for public consumption, and that's why we're having this meeting today. So I was really praying that, I feel, and I may be wrong, because I don't know who wrote the resolutions. I wasn't consulted, and no one called me to have a conversation and get my opinion on it, so I have no idea who wrote these resolutions. I can only assume, since Mayor Protem Kirkland's name was listed, that he wrote them. However, as council members and even as just normal, everyday people, we should be open to other people's opinions. I hear on this dais all the time, we have a room full of people who don't want this, so we have a room full of people who want this, so we have people who want it, let's vote yes, we have people that don't want it, let's vote no, but it's very selective. We have a room full of people that some want it, some don't. We have people in the community, just as many people in the community, who thinks there should be some reprimand and others that don't. I think that all of those opinions should be taken into consideration, and all of council should be given the opportunity to help develop a resolution that's fair and compromising. The item that we're, if I'm not mistaken, you made a motion on C, not D. The motion on the floor right now is for the proclamation. I am asking my fellow council members to take into consideration the fact that when people ask for a proclamation from the city, they want, they want the honor of having the mayor present to read that proclamation. It is an honor that they can carry with them. You would not ask the city secretary to read, to attend an event to read a proclamation. And our city secretary lives in Austin, so what are we to do? Have her drive to different events to read a proclamation? And then if the city manager is able to designate that person, who says that she should be able to get to designate that? When we have clear and defined rules of procedure in our charter, I do feel this is overriding the charter, and we'll get more into that on the next item. But what I'm asking for, from council, is in regards to the proclamation, to allow the mayor to continue to do his duty and read the proclamation, because that is something that the community is asking for, and I, and the community, people in this audience right now are asking for it, that should be given some consideration. Everything doesn't have to be all or none. We can sit here and we can negotiate these resolutions. Be willing to negotiate, because we represent everybody. And you saying that you, 97% of the people you talk to, I'm not doubting what you're saying, but if you're only talking to a certain group of people, yeah, that 97% of people are going to do what you want them to do. Because I've talked to a lot of people who are absolutely against this, that you have probably not talked to, and I've also talked to people who are for it. So I've talked to a wide range of people. It's not a, it's either this or that. Let's talk this through and come to a compromise that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify to everyone here, the reason we're meeting tonight, because there's some confusion about why today, why at 5:30. Last week, the language on the agenda item was not very clear to everyone, and for it to be clear and transparent, that's what we wanted. We wanted you to know what this item is about. So it's got nothing to do with color, the opposite, actually, and Alan can verify this. We wanted transparency on these items, and that's why we scheduled this special meeting. So I just wanted to clear that up for y'all.
Thank you, ma'am. I realize I don't have a vote, but I do have an opportunity to ask questions and make comments. Relative to Section 1.1 of the Rules of Procedure Resolution, is it the intent to completely I'm asking the author of the, of the I'm asking the author of the item.
Can you explain 3.94?
Three point... Yes, sir. I'd be happy to. Councilmember, once... I'm sorry. Your resolution calls for the basic rules of motion is that they are subject to discussion and debate. According to the basic motion, the motion to amend are all eligible, each in their turn for full discussion by and before the city council. The length of individual statements by the mayor and members is limited to five minutes unless the city council votes to extend the time allotted. Discussion and debate can continue until the mayor or any member decides it is time to move on or call a vote on the motion. 3.94 not only mentions the fact that the mayor is the presiding officer, but it also goes to interruptions. A councilmember wants to reckon I should not be interrupted when speaking unless it's called a member to order or the such interruption expressed below. If the councilmember while speaking is called to order, the member shall cease speaking until the question of order is determined. If the councilmember is found to be in order, the member should be prevented to proceed speaking, allowable interruptions or points of privilege, point of order, motion to appeal, calls for the call for orders of the day and to withdraw a motion. And I will repeat my question. My question is, from the previously adopted rules, is the intent of this change to disregard
I don't see that it is. The... I think that that would be raised as a point of order, which is in 3.94B.
You have set a time limit on something that the Rules of Procedure called to have unlimited discussion. And so, I'm just merely seeking clarification if you're looking to restrict the ability of members of this dais to speak on any subject for a longer period than five minutes without the consent and grace of the city city council.
During the debate period, that we would set a five-minute limit on each person's time when they speak to five minutes. It doesn't set a limit on how many times you can speak, so it could go in any given order to the different individuals, but yes, would limit to five minutes.
Okay. So, the intent is to disregard what is already in place? Yes or no, please? Okay. I'll go to Councilmember Lee, who has a comment question.
So, I appreciate you bringing that up, because I did want to talk about that, five minutes. And I spoke with Councilmember Kirkland last week to get clarity on that. Councilmember Kirkland, what he just read was more than five minutes. Five minutes is not a long time. I understand citizens have complained about the three minutes, but as council members, the community does want to hear from us. Should we talk for thirty straight minutes? And, you know, no. But if it's a topic of discussion that needs... That warrants more discussion, I don't understand the five minutes, especially if I can talk for five minutes, hand it off to my neighbor here, and then I can come back and talk for another five minutes, when I could probably be done in eight. So, I don't understand the limit. I don't agree with the limit. I don't think that that should be part of the changes either. So, I'm a no on the parliamentary... I'd like for the mayor to still do the parliamentary procedure of proclamations, and I also am a no on the time limit. I don't think that it's warranted. I think that they want... The public wants to hear our opinion and comments, and we, again, should be able, as a council body, to discuss it openly without inhibitions. Now, someone can call to question, but I would also like to ask that before a call... I don't want to see the call to question used as a weapon. And call to question means if there's been discussion, we're kind of repeating ourselves. Every time somebody turns on their microphone, one of us can call to question, and that means vote. There's no language that stipulates when a call to question can be asked, because if you're saying we can only talk five minutes, and then someone wants to rush and call the question, and we didn't get a chance to speak, I think that that's unfair. So, if anything, I would like to see language added that states a call to question cannot occur until every council member wanting to speak has spoken, to give everybody the opportunity to speak.
I concur that each person should have the opportunity to speak, no... Even in a call-to-question type scenario. I absolutely agree with that. There's not a desire or an intention to remove or restrict an individual's ability to speak on an item. I concur. In your looking at the item, did you have a place that you would recommend something like that?
So, if we're going to stick with the five minutes, which again, I'm not in favor of the five minutes, I'd actually... If we had to put a time limit on it, I'd be amenable to eight minutes.
I'd be amenable to ten.
I'd be amenable to ten. There we go. Hit the gavel. So, thank you for the conversation. So, ten minutes there, if we had to put a time limit on it. And also, understand, you may have clarified it, and I just don't recall, for the public. So, if an item is on the agenda and we have questions for the city manager, or the city attorney, or the presenter, there's no time limit on that, correct?
Correct. None whatsoever.
So, the time limit would come into play if a motion is made and seconded, and then discussion occurs. We would get what we're agreeing on. Hopefully, everybody is ten minutes each to have that discussion or say what we want to say, with the option of coming back to the microphone after other council members have had an opportunity to speak. So, I would like to add language that says every council member should have the opportunity to speak before a call to question.
I believe Councilmember Meyer was next to speak, but I think she's looking... Are you looking for an answer to that or a discussion on that from everybody?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Alan's help in trying to find a convenient place that would clearly indicate that.
Mayor Council, I think we could insert that language at the end of the modified 3.1, until the mayor or any member decides it's time to move on and call a vote on the motion after each city council member has had an opportunity to speak. And of course, the time limit above would be moved from five minutes to ten.
Councilmember Meyer, you've been patient with your light on.
Thank you. Let me turn my mic on. So, I absolutely think we all need to have opportunities to speak and respond. I do think we need to respect the public and how much time we're going to sit up here and do this, because this can go on forever, and this is the point of the limit. And that's one reason why people do not want to participate in government, is because I'm going to sit up there and for four hours. So, it's in respect also for y'all. There is nothing wrong with five minutes. Y'all only get three. I'm good to give it just the same thing y'all do, let's all be treated fairly. But it says five, so I'm not good with ten minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Attorney, I'm concerned because I think this somewhat subverts the presiding officer's motion or move in the discussion. Do you agree, concur? Is there a legal impediment to encroaching on the presiding officer's ability to control the meeting?
I think this modification on 3.1 preserves the mayor's role as presiding officer on everything but calling the question after there's been a motion, a second, and discussion. So, I think your rule for the dais on all other procedural points remains intact, but on this point.
Good. Thank you, sir.
As currently written.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lee.
So, again, people are also here to hear us. They want to know what our opinion is, and there aren't many items where we end up having this much discussion. A lot of our items are read, the agenda items are read, the short presentation, and we make a motion. But there are times and situations like today where more discussion is necessary. Doesn't mean you have to take up the whole ten minutes, and in most cases, that doesn't happen. But when you have a room full of people that are here when we have to say, we should be given ample time to be able to say it, and that is why I'm asking for the ten minutes.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the ten-minute rule? I have another question relative to this resolution under 1.2 Agenda Order. Is the intent to modify Article Four and further diminish the traditional mayor role in formulating the agenda? Does the term appropriate designee include other elected council members, such as the Mayor Protem? And who determines what constitutes an appropriate designee?
Can you show me what...
Article Four's agenda, you'd remove the mayor or the city manager... You'd remove the mayor from the start of this item to just say the city manager or appropriate designation prepare an agenda. In past circumstance or in past events, the mayor certainly has a hand in formulating the agenda, and by this motion, you're taking the mayor out of the ability to work and prepare an agenda and cause the same to be posted. You've also said in order to facilitate the agenda process, the mayor and one city council member... Again, you're subverting the role, in my opinion, the role of the mayor by adding the requirement that an additional city council member has to place an item on the agenda. The mayor's a different role from the city council members. The mayor's... Their duties are laid out in the city charter, and they're also laid out in this Rules of Procedure, and you're changing it. So, my question is, is the intent to modify Article Four of our procedures and further diminish the traditional mayor role? Does the appropriate designee include other council members, such as the Mayor Protem? And who determines what constitutes an appropriate designee?
I need to see this in writing.
It's in your agenda packet under Article Four, Agenda Order. This is what you've pulled up. While you're looking that up, Councilmember Lee has a comment or a question.
So, I kind of want you to find it first.
No, I do, too.
Because I want a compromise.
Okay, thank you.
I want to offer a compromise there, too.
So, can we give them an opportunity?
You want me to go ahead? I want to give them an opportunity.
Opportunity to answer the questions, a three-part question?
Okay. So, first part again, please.
First question is, the intent to modify Article Four and further diminish the traditional mayor role in formulating the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Does the term appropriate designee include other elected council members, such as the Mayor Protem?
Appropriate designee has not been changed, defined, or redefined, so I can't... Don't have an opinion on that.
Okay. Do you have any idea who would determine what constitutes an appropriate designee if the mayor is not involved in that process?
I suspect it would be the city manager.
Okay. So, we're providing political power to the city manager in this regard, an operational rather than an administrative process. Okay. You've answered my question. Councilmember Lee, you had additional comments?
Yes. So, to this point I offer, I bounced this around with some council members in five other cities near Bastrop, and just simply asked, what is their process for agenda review? And all of them unanimously said they get a preliminary agenda. All of council gets a preliminary agenda on Mondays. The preliminary agenda is kind of to alert us of what we're going to be discussing, or they're going to be discussing, because we're not doing it. And at that time, if there are any council members that want to see something on the agenda, you have ample time to either ask the mayor to put it on the agenda or get another city council member to put it on the agenda. And then, the mayor and the city manager have their final review on Wednesdays. Everyone that I talked to said that that is their process. I think that is fair, because we all get an opportunity to see what's on the agenda and ask questions prior to the meeting or do some research prior to the final review of the agenda. Our rules also state that it's customary that we get our packet on Thursdays, and we typically are getting ours on Friday. I hope we can get back to Thursday. Gives me a little bit more time. Yeah, we've always gotten our packets on Thursday. I think since we have the current city manager, I can recall maybe two or three times that that has happened. I also... We get a lot of amendments. We get a lot of... Sometimes, we show up at the council meeting, and we've gotten five emails that I haven't had a chance to look at. I know that that may be a separate subject, but I believe that if we can shore up the agenda on Monday or get a preliminary agenda on Monday to review, maybe that will help that process so that there aren't so many amendments and that we are getting the information, because if I know what's on the agenda, maybe I know what to ask for, so that there's not an amendment. We have it already. But I don't think it should just be left up to the city manager to create the agenda without input, but I think that input should come from all of council.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, let me bring the council up to speed. Councilmember Lee, you are absolutely correct. In other cities, other people do weigh in. In our city, it is about a fifteen-day cycle, meaning the staff has to have their agenda completed by today. Everything should be in Munich Code for two weeks, for the next two weeks of meeting. Tomorrow, we go through the agenda. If it's not ready by Friday, it comes off the agenda. What happens the Tuesday after that in the normal procedure is the mayor and the Mayor Protem come into the agenda, come into city hall, and we do agenda review. Normally, neither one have any say as to what happened on the agenda. What they do have say on is, we may have a discussion about strategy. For example, this particular topic may have a big public hearing, so let's move that up in the agenda to get people in and out. Very seldom does any council member have an item to put on, and when they do have it to put on, they've normally done some research. In all of my prior cities, most of the agenda items that make their way on, they're sponsored by a council member, and the council member helps put that item together, because it helps the council member also be part of the process and lets you do some of the research. You may have gone down a particular rabbit hole that by the time the research gets done, you go, yep, nope, never mind, we're not going to make it onto that agenda. The cycle that Bastrop is in doesn't quite allow for that. We could back up a week to do that, but that's certainly something that's amenable, and I just want you to understand that by the time the agenda gets put together, it's normally staff doing normal rotational things that are required because of planning commission, because of whatever legislative cycle they're in, or because a contract item is up. So...
In the agenda item, the agenda review is designed, from my understanding, to be able to have a smooth process, to have an inkling of what is going to occur, so we can formulate the order to the agenda and an appropriate way to move the agenda along, to ensure that we provide clarification on what the intent is based upon any option provided by the mayor, by a member of the city council, by staff, so it makes sure we fully understand what's being proposed. So, I'm concerned that the removal of the mayor's ability to help set the agenda is going to create a level of confusion, but I certainly understand... No, I don't understand why it's being requested in the change in the Rules of Procedure. Seeing no further discussion, I have another question on the 1.3, which is, the Agenda Order, presentation may be made by the mayor, city councilor, staff. The changes that are being presented or proclamation shall be read by the city secretary and signed by the city manager. All city council members will be afforded the opportunity to pose for a group photograph for the proclamation. Outside entities or organizations granted permission to make a presentation shall be placed in this section. Is this an intent... Is the intent here to disregard Article Four by four, as well as the city charter under the city charter under 3.08? I'm sorry, I, I'd assume since, since it's been written up that you would have, have an idea of what this is.
No, I, I...
4.4, "Presentation may be made by the mayor, city council, or staff. The mayor shall deliver any, any proclamation as may be required from time to time. Outside entities and organizations granted permission to make a presentation shall be placed in this section." Rather than the city charter, it has to do with one of the three duties that are assigned to the mayor by, by the city charter, and that is that he serves as the, as the titular head of the city, and he also serves in, in the customary role of providing proclamations and providing, let me read the language to you. I don't want, I don't want to be quoted as being wrong on there. If you'll bear with me just a moment. Make sure we're very clear on this. "The mayor shall not vote. The mayor shall have no veto power. The mayor shall appoint members to all city boards and commissions subject to confirmation by the council. The mayor shall also be recognized as the chief presiding officer of the city. The mayor shall be recognized as the head of city for all courts, by all courts, for all the purposes of serving civil processes, by the governor, for purposes of enforcing military law, and for all ceremonial purposes." I'm interpreting, proclamations be part of the ceremonial purpose, and my interpretation differently from how you were interpreting, Mayor Pro Tem?
Alan?
I'm sorry, but I'm not quite sure what the question is. If the question is, does the change in our procedure for reading and signing proclamations conflict with the charter saying the mayor is the ceremonial head, it's my opinion it does not. I think the mayor remains the ceremonial head of the city. We've changed the way we handle proclamations. The procedure we have in our, our Rules of Procedure is not the same procedure that is followed in other cities. There's various ways to deal with this. I think it's a city council policy determination.
Thank you.
Did I answer the question?
Well, I disagree, but yes, sir, you answered the question. You certainly did. Thank you so much. Okay, that's my, that's the end of my questions on this particular resolution. I will say that I have further discussion, but my discussion is going to be on both of these resolutions, and I've decided to wait until 4D to provide, to provide further comment on this. Councilmember Lee, you have another question, comment?
Comment. So Mayor Pro Tem, I want to, where are we? Because we've talked about a lot, so I want to be clear on what you're willing to change...
So we have a, we have a motion on the table that's been seconded that reflects the article as written. So if you would like to propose an amendment on, I mean, I can even just change my motion to change for 10 minutes and add the language for, after each council member has had the opportunity to speak at the end of 3.1.
Yes.
Okay, so...
So that one, and then the Agenda Order. It says here, "The mayor and the city manager on appropriate designee shall prepare an agenda." Based on what the city manager has just explained, she's basically preparing the agenda anyway on her own, and then the review is just strategic. Did I repeat that correctly, city manager?
Correct.
So for number two, why don't, why don't we just say, we take out the appropriate designee? Because she already does that. What we, I think, need to determine is who's going to do the agenda review?
Well, I mean, the city manager is doing it, like I mentioned earlier, who would appropriate designee be? I, I would assume that that would be something Sylvia, and, and the reason would be, is if perhaps she was not available, and we needed the ACM to do it. That's just the only thing I could think of.
So should we add staff to that? Because I think that's what, what the question that's been posed to me is, what if she just always picks you? Or what if she picks Kevin? So, so in your writing, you're referring to a designated staff person?
Well, but I, I didn't write that.
That's what I'm, I'm asking, is that we're...
But yeah, I'm interpreting it to be a designated staff member.
So should we add that for clarity? Designee, staff designee?
Staff designee.
So Councilmember Lee, if I could clarify why that is, and Mayor, please jump in, because you were the only one here at the time. You had a prior city manager that was very contentious and could not get along with the mayor. And they brought in a second person to make sure that there were witnesses in the room to that exchange. That's where that designee came in. Hence, when I took the helm, it's the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem. There's nowhere that it says it needs to be, those two people. I'm happy if the council alternates. The reason why it's two council members, it's the same reason, so one council member doesn't necessarily hog the agenda and, and fill it up with their thing.
Right.
So it's all, it's all part of transparency. I am happy if the council does a rotational gist in, or whatever you want to call it, in, in setting the agenda.
Well, I, I disagree. The mayor holds a particular place on, on city council.
No, 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 I, I know, but the whole reason why there's a second person...
And you were, you're absolutely right, it was a previous mayor, and because there would be occasions that were a, an agenda, a meeting would be held at which the mayor could not be there, the Mayor Pro Tem was invited to sit in on that meeting to ensure continuity and what that was about, and I see no reason why that should be discontinued. The only thing that I see, Councilmember Lee, on, on this, on Agenda Order, is removing the mayor from, from working with the agenda. So that's, that's, this is simply meant to, to subvert the, the authority of the mayor by the council, if, if it passes. And I'm, you know, that's, it's, I think it's a fait accompli, but if you have other points you want to make on there, please do so. Your light is still on, so you have the floor.
I, I, so where it says, "In order to facilitate the agenda process, the mayor and one council member." I just think, long-term, with these changes, as someone pointed out, this is going to be for all mayors, future mayors. And I want to avoid the hassle down the road of another council having to come back and create another resolution to overturn it, because I, I understand there's some, there's some issues between some council members and our current mayor, but that won't be the case all the time. So I'm, I, that's why I'm hesitant in taking out the mayor, because mayor should be involved in this process. This is a unique situation that we have here. And we're, but we're not changing it specifically for him, we're setting a precedent for all future mayors.
No, 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 Councilmember Lee, you are making a decision with you as the council. When another council is seated again at the next election, or the election after that, that council can undo what you did.
Oh, no, that's what I just said.
Unless there's a, unless there's a, a charter amendment that then solidifies it and requires the voters to do it.
That's what I just said. But then that requires another meeting, another resolution, another discussion, which, again, takes up time, keeps us from, in my opinion, doing the distance of the city. So I, I, I won't say that I'm completely opposed to this item, however, I, I, I think that the mayor should have some involvement in some ways.
So I'll offer that every year, the council reviews the Rules of Procedure. It's put on our calendar. I'm, I don't recall what instrument causes that to take place, but every year, council reviews the Rules of Procedure. And two years ago, we made a fairly lengthy set of very small changes, you know, change that number, change that value, change that thing. And then this year, this is our first time to review it, but I do see it as something that can be reviewed and changed at any time with a simple majority of council.
And then, we already talked about my, so at this time, I guess I want to be clear, at this time, you're amendable to making changes to number one?
Yes.
Regarding parliamentary procedures?
For two items that were mentioned in item number one.
But not the proclamations?
No.
And, and then the number two, not amendable to the mayor and the city manager?
Hmm.
What about the mayor remaining able to put anything on the agenda as the mayor?
With one council member.
Without one council member. Okay, thank, thank you.
So I'd like to amend, no, Kevin made the motion.
Did I? Okay, would you like to propose the amendment, since I see you've been writing it down?
Sure.
Sorry.
So the amendments would be to change the limit for the individual statements by mayor and members, limiting to 10 minutes unless the city council votes to extend the time allotted, so that's a change from the written five minutes. And then at the end of that 3.1 section, it, to add the words, "After each council member has had the opportunity to speak," which allows us to call the question, but only after each person has spoken.
Yes, I amend my emotion, my motion in that way.
And I second.
We have an amended motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Lee, I see your light is still...
Sorry, I have one more question.
Okay.
So Mayor Pro Tem, on the proclamation?
Mm-hmm.
What is your intent for proclamations to be read outside of the dais? Because that's not spelled out here.
For meetings that occur outside of our...
If, if a special event wants the mayor to read a proclamation?
Right, so for meetings that occur outside of our council meetings, our Rules of Procedure don't apply, and this is not a generic restriction on doing proclamations outside of this meeting. In fact, you couldn't do that through this instrument. You'd have to set policy somewhere else via some other means. So that is not altered or changed by this.
So if a church or an organization wants him to do a proclamation, this does not prevent that?
It does not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm kind of trying to remember what it was that I was going to say, because I think I've had a birthday since this all started, but this is why the amendment to this, to 10 minutes, you are experiencing why I do not like that amendment. However, in the spirit of cooperation and to end this discussion, that's fine.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, we have a motion and a second, seeing no further discussion. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. We will move on to item 4D. Consider action approved, resolution number R-2024-49, City Council, the city of Bastrop, Texas, regarding, regarding certain aspects of the office of mayor, establishing or modifying policies regarding expenses for official business trips, city funds for the mayor's attendance at events, mayor's office space, speaking roles at city functions, city hall access, mayor contact information online, appointment to internal and external boards and legislative advocacy, authorizing the city manager to execute and providing for an effective date. Once again, this has been submitted by Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland. Do you wish to lay this out, or do I move to, before I move to the comments?
Let's, let's go to comments, Mayor.
Madam City Secretary, I have some comments here. Do we have any additional?
No, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. The first person who has signed up to speak in, not to speak, who has placed her support for this item, does not wish to speak, Lindy Larson. The next person on this item to speak, does not wish to speak, is Catherine Albers, and she is in support of the resolution. And then I have Mr. Joe Grady... Mr. Tuck, you've signed up for Citizens Comments, but then you also have 4D. Do you wish to speak on 4D, sir?
I do, I do.
Please, step up, provide your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, my name is Joe Grady Tuck. I'm a sixth-generation resident of this county, currently residing at 1503 Wilson Street in the historic district. It's very appropriate, because I'm a very historic member of this community at age 78. I've been practicing law and been active in Republican politics for over half a century. And unlike, for example, I worked, when I got out of law school at North Texas, I worked for the Republican Party in Texas, Colorado, in the Nixon administration, and for Congressman Bill Archer from Houston, who was chairman of Ways and Means at the time. I came back to Texas, moved to Kerrville for a time where I was elected District Attorney of the 26, 6th County, 216th Judicial District. And to show you how long that marks my participation in GOP politics, at the time, I was the only Republican DA in Texas. Now, everybody's Republican. The, I believe that this is the best council that I have had in my lifetime, best city council. I supported nearly everybody on the dais, including, including the mayor. He was not my first choice in the mayor's race. I voted for Deborah Jones, who should have been elected, and if she had been, we wouldn't be having this meeting today. I did vote for, for my friend, and I hope he's still my friend, Lyle Nelson, because he got the endorsement of an organization to which I belong, the Bastrop County Conservatives. I find now that that endorsement was won by misrepresentation, and I think that where we are today, and I'm going to speak unlike the first lawyer that spoke, I'm not going to address the legalities of this, but only the politics, because I think it's important in how we run our city. And I think that we have a weak mayor system in our city charter. The mayor's means of influencing policy is limited to making appointments and using the mayor's office as a bully pulpit. And I think that influence has been destroyed by the events that bring us here together. I think, and it pains me to say this, Lyle, I really think you ought to resign. It's been an embarrassment to the city, and I think that your ability to influence, to use the office as a bully pulpit has been, has been demeaned. And I hope that passage of these amendments to limit the mayor's authority will, will be an impetus to that decision. I finally want to say that there's been a lot of miss, completely mistaken publications about this whole matter. The first one is that this might have anything whatsoever to do with the Gateway Project, it certainly does not. I resent the implication that somehow my friend Jimmy Crouch, who is the person who first got us on the road to getting rid of the B3 code, had anything to do with this, with this whole thing, other than legitimate ends of the, of the council. I also think there's been a lot of criticism, unjustified criticism, of my friend John Kirkland, who is only, only doing what the city council asked him to do. I think he is, he's a man who should be admired and is admired by me, and I think everybody that knows him. So I urge the passage of this, this amendment. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Secretary, I don't believe I have any other comments. I'm sorry.
Are you sure?
Ms. Curtis? I just, I, I put, I put your paper away, you did have 4D on there.
Yeah, I actually had 4C, but that's okay.
Okay.
So, so I just want to say that I don't know how I'm supposed to comment on these proclamation, these, this, these proposals without someone laying this out, and now that I've heard from Joe Grady Tuck, I absolutely know Gateway is behind this. And, and this is really a political vendetta to humiliate the mayor, to get him to step down. Well, you know what, guys? Go get your signatures. I have a real concern about the number eight, legislative advocacy, but I'm going to speak from ignorance here, because I don't see any backup on this. So you, you need to explain to us, if you're saying, Mr. Kirkland, that you want the city to pay a lobbyist to advocate for its legislative agenda, if Stan Gertis, our legislator, wants to talk to the mayor on legislative items about water, or all the things that we're facing on development, he's not supposed to talk to the mayor because the mayor isn't... I, I just don't get it. And I really think that this is a whole political agenda that is really inappropriate... And I really think that this is a whole political agenda that is really inappropriate for these resolutions. So please explain this to us, and please do it before we're supposed to weigh in on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope it's still a business meeting. We've had, I have no other comments that I'm aware of, just wanted to make sure I have given everybody a chance to speak on this agenda item. We have had, the item has been read, has not been laid out, we've had citizen comments. I guess at this point in time, to move this along, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
Second.
I have a second by Mayor Protem Kirkland. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I spent some time speaking with Ms. Jody Smith today in regards to the comments that she made during citizens' comments earlier, and instead of three minutes, we had an hour. So we were able to cover some things. And so I seconded it because that lets us begin the conversation. I'd like to request a, some specific amendments to it. The first thing is that item number six, mayoral contact information online, I would like to strike that completely. The reason is because it unfairly prevents access to the elected leaders by citizens, and it impacts the citizens in a way that I'd like to remove that one. Item seven, there are two places where it says "the mayor," so it should be the policy of the City of Bastrop that the mayor shall not serve as a representative of the city on internal, external boards, commissions, committees, and task forces, therefore, to the extent the mayor has been appointed or otherwise designated by the city council. So that's the things that we have put the mayor on. The intent here was not to do it to the office of the mayor, but rather for this to be Mayor Nelson. And so I would like to request that "the mayor" in item seven, in two places, be removed and replaced with Mayor Nelson. And then on item eight, on legislative advocacy, the intention here is only to remove things that are explicitly previously authorized by a council resolution. And so, and so the request to insert is therefore, to the extent the mayor has been previously designated or authorized, and then add the words "by council" to serve as a spokesperson or advocate for the city. And that prevents it from interfering with, say, charter language that would, because we're only doing something that was based upon a council authorized thing, not generically. And so those three things, which I'll go through again, I'd like to request to amend the motion. Number one is to strike item six. The second one is to place Mayor Nelson in two places and substitute for "the mayor." And then on number eight, to add the two words "by council" after authorized, designated or authorized.
I agree to amend my motion with your amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, I had this whole speech written. I was going to walk you through the decision-making process that I hoped would help you understand why I intend to vote the way that I will. It's hard to do in a case like this because it unfolded over the course of about nine months. So there's a lot of places where there were forks in the road. Then the mayor got to me and made a very compelling argument. So I had to scrap the whole thing and start over this afternoon. No, he didn't call me this morning in violation of the Open Meetings Act to get me to vote his way. It was something he said just after our meeting last Tuesday. It just took that long for the words to sink in. The mayor pointed out to me while he was cursing me, along with a couple of other council members, up one side and down the other. At the time, I was surprised, so surprised, that it took me a while to even realize he was talking to me. And by then, I realized that his part of the conversation had proceeded to the point where I was not going to be able to catch up. So, in thinking about that encounter, it finally occurred to me that this vote isn't about the decision-making process and why I decided what I did at each step along the way. It's about something much simpler. It's about loyalty. Now, I've always considered myself a pretty loyal person, often volunteered to take one for the team. I can think of multiple times since I've been on council when I did just that. I made votes that I didn't like at all, but I did it for the city as a whole. So this really made me think. In that cursing out, I don't believe the word "loyalty" was ever used, but upon reflection, it ran through every part of what he said. I also thought about the speech that I wrote, and then scrapped, of course, and realized that loyalty ran through it as well. The mayor was upset that I wasn't being loyal to him. And it turns out that the thing that bothers me the most about what he has done and not done is the fact that he has not been loyal to the obligations to the people, to his obligations to the people of Bastrop. He has placed his desire to avoid embarrassment and public atonement above his duties to taxpayers. Worse yet, he's asking us to do the same. The allegations and subsequent inquiry into Visit Bastrop impacted me on a very personal level for a few reasons. First, I was one of the business leaders who, back in 2016, led the effort to create an independent DMO. Second, I was on the Board of Visit Bastrop, serving as the vice chair, when some of the alleged behavior took place. Last, I counted the mayor among my friends and still hold his life of public service in high regard. Regarding my first reason, I argued for an independent entity that focused on visitor market, thinking it would be more effective and responsive to the tourism industry than a city department. Secondly, I feel that I failed in my fiduciary duty when I was a member of the Board of Visit Bastrop and should have made a more concerted effort to ensure that better financial policies were created. Then perhaps this wholeness wouldn't have happened. The mayor and his defenders are creating misdirection and by indignantly saying that he wasn't found guilty of stealing from Visit Bastrop or something similar. Well, this is true, but he wasn't charged with stealing from Visit Bastrop. The charges were interference with an investigation. He admitted to interference with an investigation, and he was found guilty of interference with The next time you hear someone defending the mayor in this manner, listen carefully to what they say. They will likely either lie by saying he did nothing wrong, which interfering with an investigation is wrong, or they will lie by saying he didn't do something he isn't accused of doing. The thing about loyalty, when you're loyal to two people or things and they conflict, you have to make a choice. And I will vote yes because I believe that the rules should apply to those who are in a position of power. So my choice is to be loyal to the oath that I made to the people of the city rather than to any one person.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So there are several compromises I could ask for in these, this list here, but I don't think that you guys would go for them, so, I mean, I have an issue with every single one of them, only because I know that our city attorney is saying that these actions do not override our charter. I feel differently. He's the attorney. I haven't gone to law school, but we have to take him by what he says. But I do, as the charter is written, and the charter specifically outlines the duty of a mayor, and I do, I feel like we're overriding the charter in that that changes in the duties of the mayor should be left up to the voters because that is the way the charter is written. The Ethics Board reprimanded the mayor for interference as a result of not being honest regarding his relationship with the individual in question at Visit Bastrop. I have heard a lot of talk that he's guilty, he was found guilty. I don't see it as being found guilty, but there was, I see where people see the interference in the investigation. I do want to make sure people understand that the interference was more about the dishonesty. There was a request for his personal phone. By law, he was not required to give his personal phone. I think that that needs to be distinguished, that the reprimand is for the dishonesty, not the monies. The attorney said that she found no evidence of any, his implication with anything regarding funding at Visit Bastrop, and not because he didn't release his personal phone. By law, he's not required to. So the reprimand was not for theft. However, I feel many of the resolutions are written in a manner, I feel they're written in a manner that implies he's not to be trusted with city funds, he's not to be trusted with public, engaging with the public. And I feel like, from reading, that that stems from the thought of the Visit Bastrop money situation, which he was not involved in. I guess it's hard for me to understand why he should be removed of all of his duties when the offense is that he wasn't honest about the relationship that he had with the person in question. Does not indicate to me that he is not responsible in terms of city funding. He never made any, he never, as his time in mayor, voted on anything for Visit Bastrop. And are there funding that would imply that he was partial to Visit Bastrop? So I don't understand why he's being treated like a thief and his rights are being, as mayor, have been taken away from him. Was he initially untruthful? Yes. He initially did tell council, no. I understand several council members even asked him before the investigation, and he said that he was not. And then it was determined through the investigation that he was untruthful. So yes, he admitted to that. Did he handle the inquiry wrong in some respects? I don't deny that either. There could have been, should have been, more willing participation in the inquiry itself. I do not disagree with that. But the reality is, had he admitted to the flaw upfront and handed over his personal phone, which he, again, was not required to do by law, and even if the Ethics Committee found that he did not interfere with the investigation, it is my belief that we would still be here today, having this discussion. There are people in the community that firmly stand by the belief that he should not be mayor and that these resolutions are warranted. However, again, we should not overlook the fact that there are so many people in the community that believe this level of punishment does not fit the crime, and I am one of those people. During the initial process, I was advised by the city manager that it was her belief that if the mayor had told the truth in the initial part of the investigation, it would satisfy the council members. He did eventually admit to not being honest about certain aspects of the investigation, but when it was said, that wasn't enough. When he admitted that he had the affair, it still wasn't enough. And he wouldn't have told the truth were it not for the findings, is what was said. So he only told the truth because we got the text messages. Then I asked council if he gave up the personal phone, would they be willing to negate the Ethics Complaint? The answer was no. After receiving the evidence, I asked for a private center and reprimand, and the answer was no because it was their belief he wouldn't learn his lesson if it wasn't public. The reality is, we could have accomplished a reprimand without spending a dime of tax dollars to do so, and we're still spending it, and we have not received an amount of how much we've spent on this investigation. So in my opinion, and the opinion of many in this community, this process was purposed to inflict as much public humiliation as possible on him and to force him to resign. He's been asked numerous times to resign, to let it all go away, resign. We'll take it all away if you resign. His actions, while disappointing, certainly to his family, friends, and loved ones, is on a personal level, but his action had no direct impact on city finances, organization, development projects, events, or otherwise. The argument, I've heard, he did it to himself. That is a valid argument. He was dishonest. Had he been upfront about it, again, I don't, I think we'd still be sitting here. And members of this council had an opportunity to handle the situation in a manner that did not cause public shame to the city, the city hall, city council, division in the community. It could have been done a different way, which is what I asked for all along the way. Let's do it a different way. We can still reprimand him. We could still, we could have removed him from BEDC. We could have implemented some of the resolutions that you're bringing, but it could have been done in a manner that did not cause the money that we spent, whatever that amount is, and division in our community. I, I feel like, Councilmember Plunkett asked me one time, why am I fighting so hard for the mayor? My response to him and to you all publicly, I am not fighting for the mayor. I am choosing in this moment to show grace and mercy in this situation because I had, I and many in the community do not feel this level of punishment fits the offense, and my efforts to find a compromising solution were unsuccessful. Now, one of us are perfect human beings, but grace and mercy is given to each and every one of us in our own transgressions. What I would like to see happen is a more defined process for handling these types of incidents in our ethics code. There is nothing in our rules of procedure or ethics code that gives council a guide on how to reprimand a council member or a mayor in an instance like this. So if we're going to be doing this and we're going to be passing judgment, I think we should have an outline of what that looks like and not just creating a bunch of resolutions that takes away people's ability. So there is no reprimand process outlined in our charter, rules of procedure, ethics code, or other in the Ethics Committee, other than the Ethics Committee, which was followed, they rendered a reprimand, and we're going above and beyond. The Ethics Committee did not see fit to remove him from BEDC, but we're going above and beyond what their recommendation was. I understand there's a recall petition out there. I would accept the results of the recall petition because if that is accomplished, the process was followed, and the result of following that process is at the will of the people. I do not condone, nor will I approve, a resolution which stripes away the rights of the mayor. I'm not saying nothing should happen to him, but I am saying this level of punishment does not fit the crime, and the action taken in this resolution is outside the confines of the voter-approved charter. My hope is that we could table the item and collectively work together on each as a council member body to come up with a resolution where input from the citizens we have listened to is received in this room and in the community, and that all council members' opinions are considered before we act on a final resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Crouch.
For me, the only reason we're sitting in here tonight are because of the actions of the mayor, not anything that any of us have done, not anything that any of us have said. It's all because of the actions of our mayor. I think we've all gone through, as you can probably tell, a lot of soul-searching for what do we need to do, and it's been going on for six months or seven months, or I think Councilmember Plunkett said it was nine months, and it probably has been going on for that long because that's how long all of us have known about it. So there's a lot of things on council that you can't say or do because you're a council member, but now we have an opportunity to do that. So I've spoken to a lot of citizens for their opinion. I've taken it all in. Very few of them have been able to see all the information that we've been able to see. We've seen a lot, and it will change you. When you see all the evidence that you, that was presented... When you see all the evidence that you, that was presented to the Ethics Committee and that was presented to the City Council, it will change you, and it did. It changed the way I feel about a lot of things. As a council member, we don't always get to speak. We can never respond to citizen comments. We just have to kind of sit up here and take it and then not be able to respond, and that's great for the people generally that are doing the citizen comments, but always, not always great for us to be able to voice our opinion. So that creates a lot of silence sometimes in the decisions that are made, and then we get questioned for that because we don't speak. So real reason is, we just can't speak. I do get an opportunity tonight to speak, and I wanted to share my thoughts and opinions on our situation with Mayor Nelson. I'm disappointed in the mayor's actions. He has lied to me personally on three separate occasions, when responding to questions about the runoff election, the Visit Bastrop investigation, and multiple other things. I called him point blank and just asked him some questions, and then at the time, I didn't think that he was being dishonest with me, but over the course of nine months and all the documents that we've read, I found out that he was. He could have anytime in the past nine months stopped all these actions with a simple admission, I think, but he has chosen to place himself above the city and selfishly place himself above everybody else. The entire process could have stopped at a point in time when just three people knew everything that was involved. Now, the city knows what was involved with it, especially if you ask for information requests. He has selfishly played the victim in something that he alone started. He did not offer his apology to council until after there was a stack of documents in front of him that he could no longer deny. Unfortunately, if it were not for the Visit Bastrop employees, none of the information would be available tonight, so thank goodness that they came forward to complain about their work environment. If that wouldn't have happened, none of this would have ever came out. So I really feel for those employees that first came out and really respect them for standing up and doing what they did. Another thing that the mayor has done is he's consistently blamed others for his predicament. He started off blaming his mayoral opponents for starting the original rumors prior to him even being mayor. He blamed the Visit Bastrop employees when the Visit Bastrop investigation started, and he blamed recently Mayor Protem for us asking him to file the Ethics Complaint, and that's not right either. There's been zero accountability for the actions that he's done. I've only seen or heard him acknowledge that he has done anything wrong one time, and that was after a stack of text messages received from Visit Bastrop CEO's iPad replaced in front of him, and only then did he acknowledge that he had done anything wrong. So if that wouldn't have happened, I don't know that we would have ever been here, and that's sad. That part, that part is sad as well. Is this what the city needs or expects as our mayor? Is this what we want for the image of Bastrop? Not me. I don't. I think we can, I think we can do better. That's not what I voted for when I voted, and I'm sure that if the information that has been presented during the Ethics Hearing and the Visit Bastrop investigation was made public during the initial election and during the runoff election, that none of us would even be here. He would have been exposed for what he has been proven to be, and that's not a leader. I've been questioned as a council, as a council member, why do I even care about the information that came out of the investigation? And it was said again tonight, why aren't we worried about street drainage or public improvements, other normal things with the city? And why don't I work on the other issues that we've got? The answer to that is, I wish I could. I wish that I'd not have to read any of the hundreds of pages of information that have been presented by the employees of Visit Bastrop. Why would the citizens of Bastrop, or would the citizens of Bastrop be happy with me if I have read those complaints and just ignored them? I don't think that anybody in this room would be happy with me if I knew all the information that I know and did nothing about it. It wouldn't be right. I have a judicial and ethical job to do as your councilperson, and that's what I'm trying to do. At the end of the day, I would hope that Mayor Nelson reevaluates his decision not to resign and do the right thing for the citizens, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. This is hard. I appreciate all the support that you've given council. That really means a lot because there's a lot of misinformation going on. There's a lot of distraction and deflection going on with the real issue is. So let's, let's be clear, and I'm gonna, I get it, we talk city all the time, so we get into the bushes with it, but a lot of y'all don't understand, so I'm gonna do a really quick 101 on why we got here. We're here tonight because the mayor was found unanimously guilty of an ethics violation which involved an organization called Visit Bastrop. And if you don't know what Visit Bastrop is, it is a marketing organization, and it's funded by the city, the city money through the hotel motel account. That means their budget depends on public funds, your money, to operate. When the mayor was found guilty unanimously, he did indeed interfere with the investigation. He refused to turn over all requested devices, and as a public servant, you must turn over all your devices. We know that when we have training, so don't think you don't have to do that. That was one of the first things I learned. Doesn't matter if it's my personal phone or my business phone, you turn them all over. But the mayor hasn't. He lied about his inappropriate relationship with the Visit Bastrop CEO. To this day, he still has not turned over all of his devices, so mayor, today would be a really good day to turn that device over. Let's talk about the organization Visit Bastrop's budget because it's not little. Last year, they requested around $1.8 million. We cut that down to about 1.5, and this is not given at one time, okay? So that's on a monthly payment right now that the city does of your money. The investigation that council ordered discovered about $70,000 of unidentified or mislabeled funds. Now, this investigation is still going on, and more could be found out. The argument that these funds are only a tiny percentage of the Visit Bastrop budget is a slap in the face to you because I don't care if it's $1. If it's misuse of your money, it's wrong, and I am up here to protect you, and that's why we are doing this. How do you feel about that? Do you like your money being misused? You put trust and faith in us. You voted for us. That's our job. As a public servant, it is a big deal to me, and I know it is to council. Also, it's been stated that this investigation, as I said, is over, but it's not. On the contrary, this investigation continues to this day. Law enforcement is now in charge. Misuse of public funds and interfering with the investigation regarding these funds is a big deal. Let's talk about what duties and qualities a public servant should possess. Public servants are expected to be honest, truthful, transparent in their actions. Lyle Nelson has proven he possesses none of these qualities. On day one, day one, when the statements were made from the four employees of Visit Bastrop, I stated I absolutely would not be complicit, and I would be no part of a cover-up. I was and still am adamant that the public should have all the facts regarding this matter, and I mean the facts. The Code of Ethics states mayors shall be open to public scrutiny of their official actions, including their relationships, contractual and otherwise. Lyle Nelson was unanimously found guilty of violating this code. He is not fit to represent this great city. We are elected officials. Our obligation to you, to our citizens, is to represent you with full integrity. We have a fiduciary duty to you, our citizens, to be honest and trustworthy with your money. You should expect nothing less from any of us, any of us on this dais. You have trusted us with this job, and it's a job I take very seriously because I was born and raised in Bastrop. I'm seventh-generation Bastropian. This is a big deal to me. I expect integrity from the office. My heart is Bastrop and it's its citizens. It is an honor and privilege to serve and work for you. I will always hold anyone accountable who violates your trust, and very, very sadly, Lyle Nelson has done just that.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Protem Kirkland.
I would like to take a moment to deal with a specific topic, and that is the alleged misuse of public funds. So our council was compelled to call for the investigation after allegations surfaced about improper financial conduct, and this came from all of the Visit Bastrop employees. The Bastrop Police Department at the time opened a criminal investigation, and City Council called for an administrative investigation and performed a forensic audit of Visit Bastrop finances. So there's been a discussion about $70,000. Visit Bastrop will say that there was receipts totaling something like $84,000 that they had to look through, and I wanted to point out something that I think is important, and that is that that does not represent misuse of public funds, those dollars, the $70,000 or the $84,000, it kind of depends on which one you were looking at. Those were labeled as potentially out-of-compliance transactions, including places where the boss was spending money and with no one looking over the shoulder to make sure that it was spent appropriately. And so the dollar amounts, they indicate a breach of fiduciary duty, which basically means that Visit Bastrop has a legal obligation to act responsibly when managing your money, the public's money, which in this case wasn't fully met, but they don't, it does not by itself represent misuse of public funds. After a comprehensive review by Visit Bastrop and providing details to the city and then additional work and investigation by our city manager and additional law enforcement, the misuse of public funds consists of several things. One is gifts made with public funds, which violates the Texas Constitution, personal expenses paid for with public funds, and expense reports that are coded as client development when no clients were present. I want to be very clear that any misuse of public funds, no matter how small, is unacceptable, and the Texas Legislature agrees with me because even misusing as little as $1,000 of public funds can be treated as a state jail felony and $2,500 as a second-degree felony. There is an ongoing criminal investigation that will continue to get to the bottom of this issue, and the city is committed to cooperating fully, and when more information can be shared on that, it will be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. A couple of questions on this agenda item for the author, if I may. On Section 1.1, expenses for official business trips, as noted, this is already in place by ordinance as well as in practice for the mayor. Is there a reason for the repetition? And the second request is, since it's already in place, I'll offer a friendly amendment to add this requirement for all of council. Next, on 1.2, I have a question. While 1.2 is city funds for mayors' attendance at events, while this seems somewhat petty and vengeful, is there a reason that is not applied to all of council, and what public purpose does this serve?
In the whereas clauses, it says, the last one, well, two final ones. I don't even go to three, maybe even four. The City Council passed Resolution 2023-129 authorizing an investigation under the City Charter into financial mismanagement allegations made against Visit Bastrop and certain interactions between particular leaders of the city and of Visit Bastrop. City Council passed a motion on December 18, 2023 to file an ethics complaint against Mayor Nelson under Bastrop Code of Ethics for abuse of power, interference with the above-mentioned investigation. Whereas the Bastrop Board of Ethics unanimously determined that Mayor Nelson interfered with the above-mentioned investigation, violating the Bastrop Code of Ethics, and issued a letter of reprimand on August 10, 2024, and whereas the City Council find it to be reasonable and prudent to approve this resolution modifying certain practices and policies and further determines that Mayor Nelson's conduct has provided a rational basis for this resolution.
So that's your response to the public purpose?
That's where it's explained, yes.
All righty. The Section 1.3, I found it a little bit relative to mayor's office space. I really have a problem with it. I've always offered the space assigned to the mayor to any member of council wishes to use it. The language seems petty and directly fairly degrading the office of the mayor, in my opinion. Section 1.4, again, seems petty and vengeful and is also counter to the City Charter, Section 3.08. 1.4, sir, is speaking roles at city functions shall be the policy of the City of Bastrop. City staff shall not schedule or propose the mayor to speak at city or city-sponsored events outside of city council meetings without prior approval of city council. What public purpose does that serve?
Same as the prior one, ma'am.
Okay. This is the 1.5 relative to City Hall access. That's not a function of the office of the mayor. Mayor neither grants or denies access to members of council. That's something you'll need to take up with the city manager. 1.6, this is definitely vengeful. It does not serve any city purpose.
It's been struck, sir.
And, oh, thank you, thank you. Thank goodness. 1.7, a vengeful measure that touches on Section 3.8 of the City Charter. The mayor appoints members of boards and commissions to awaiting confirmation by council. By this action, you're removing any participation by the mayor on boards and commissions, not only within the city but also external, and you've certainly named them out. Or you, should this resolution pass, will I be allowed the opportunity to send a letter of resignation to these various boards and commissions that I serve the city upon?
I don't believe I can infringe your First Amendment rights to send letters, so nor would I try to.
And then 1.8, again, a vengeful measure that touches on Section 3.8 of the City Charter. This is legislative advocacy. Can you, again, explain what public purpose is other than reading out the body of your resolution?
I put those whereas statements in there for that purpose.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Well, I know we, I know we have a motion and a second at the table right now. I appreciate y'all's comments. They are certainly heartfelt. I'm unsure of the veracity of all of them, but I will respect your totality to your own opinions. Tonight, this council is considering two resolutions that subvert the traditional role of the mayor of Bastrop. In my opinion, this action is being made to continue the harassment and bullying tactics to force me to resign as mayor. I've been asked by City Council or by members of City Council on at least three occasions to resign. You know, I made a mistake of a personal and private nature, and whether through immature You know, I made a mistake of a personal and private nature, and whether through immaturity, insecurity, anger, and/or shame, I was slow to admit such. I've offered apologies to friend and foe alike. Some have received it in the vein it was meant, while some others have trivialized it. I've asked for forgiveness, and I have given forgiveness. However, there have been attempts to connect me to some sort of financial impropriety. This has been done through innuendo, conjecture, misinformation, and spite. My detractors have found that they cannot prosecute me, so they have sought to persecute me through actions similar to what is being proposed tonight. I've been eviscerated in the press and social media as has my family. Still, still, a lot of the comments that have been made about me have been unsubstantiated, but we will see what happens during the investigation. One of the three contracted attorneys the city has retained for more than eight months investigation stated, "The mayor denied any knowledge of misuse of public funds, and my investigation to date have uncovered no evidence otherwise." There can be no evidence because there was no misuse of funds on my part. These attorneys, as well as at least one audit firm, have cost the city a significant amount of money to place that blame on me when I've authorized no such expenditure for legal assistance. And contrary to popular belief, I turned over all of my official devices to the investigator, my cellphone, my iPad, and my computer, everything that had official city business on. While I respect the Ethics Commission members as well as their decision, what is described as interference was me exercising my constitutional rights under the Fourth Amendment and reliance on attorney general opinions. What is being characterized as lies is a matter of interpretation and semantics, over-elaboration. No guilty verdict from the Ethics Committee, only a finding based upon our ethics policy. This vendetta by some has jeopardized friendships and compromised relationships. Some have shown true friendship in both chastising me for my personal indiscretion and for having faith that there was no financial malfeasance on my part. Those who share my Christian faith, I will continue to pray that they achieve an understanding of judgment and forgiveness. To those who consider themselves conservative or liberal, they should be concerned about this encroachment and overreach by a governmental entity in someone's personal life and civil liberties. I am highly doubtful that anything said here tonight by myself or anybody that supports me is going to change this ill-conceived, anticipated vote. This personal vendetta will spill over into subverting the office of the mayor. The perception of power that some on this dais have assumed is fleeting, but I pray that hate will be mitigated and we can collectively do what is best for our city. Being the mayor of Bastrop is about serving the community, not any self-interest, whether political, financial, or vengeful. That being said, the past eight months have taken a toll on me in many different ways. Trying to serve our community with so much unnecessary adversity makes one feel that their efforts are for naught. After much prayer with family and friends and requests from dozens of our citizens, I have decided that tonight I am announcing that I have no plans to resign as Mayor of Bastrop. Now, still a business meeting. I am beat up, but not beat down. God has led me to this spot for a reason, and I cannot abandon it now. If I don't stand up to bullying tactics, how can I expect someone else to? With the support of friends and concerned citizens, we can overcome the campaign to remove citizens with divergent views by the powers that be. Bring on the recall with its conjecture, innuendo, and falsehoods. We'll let the voters decide. With that being said, we have a motion and a second. I'm sorry, we have somebody who wants to speak. Councilmember Lee.
Yes, Mayor Protem. So can we clarify just a couple of things? Number seven, on the CAPCOG, do we have the ability to remove him from the CAPCOG board?
We put him, we had a resolution that named Mayor Nelson to the CAPCOG board.
I just wonder if that board has a say-so. Now that he's actually on the board, is there a process that they have to follow to remove him?
I can answer that. The council has the ability to remove that because the council took the action.
Okay.
Whether or not that is advisable, that's another thing, but again, that's not up to me. I don't vote.
Okay. And then...
I will comment, Ms. Lee. There was another discussion with Jody Smith, or the same discussion today with Jody Smith, that didn't address the wording of that item, but she did look at the list of boards and commissions that would be vacated, and she expressed a concern that those are important boards and commissions, and we need to make sure that we maintain city representation on that. And I told her that I concurred, but that wasn't something that we could fix tonight, but that it's something that we could take up as a new item of business in, you know, a next following meeting.
So the mayor still appoints, right?
Not to these roles. To city boards and commissions, yes.
Oh, so...
There may be different opinions on that board. Wait till the appropriate time.
So we are going to figure out how that process is going to work?
Yes.
Okay. And then in the legislative advocacy, who, what's the replacement there?
Well, we have a resolution that has passed that gives the mayor and the mayor protem legislative advocacy ability, and then this item removes it completely for everybody, so it doesn't even keep the mayor protem there. And since the legislature is not in session currently, it's not, it's not something that's specifically an issue. The item that was passed previously gave the mayor and the mayor protem at that time the ability to go and testify before the House of Representatives, and so we're not currently in a state where we need that. And if we needed it, we could name an individual giving them the ability to do that, just like it was done at that time when it was, at the time, it was Mayor Schrader and Councilperson Rogers.
So does this, though, prevent him from being able to, if our state senator calls and says what are Bastrop's needs on X, Y, and Z, this does not prevent him from...
No, it doesn't. It also doesn't bind anybody else that's not in our city. So for instance, again, when you talk about the freedoms and rights of other people, right, so we do not have the ability, nor should we have the ability, to tell someone that's not in our government who they can and can't talk to. And so I would anticipate that those individuals may continue to contact different people, including the mayor, and that's normal and expected.
And then what, how do you, I mean, there are a lot of events that the mayor, TML, I think there's a lot of events that the mayor should be attending. And they may fall in between a council meeting. What is your thought process in him getting approval from all of council to attend functions that might fall or pop up that he may not even be aware of, and he's made aware of it, and now we have to have a council meet?
I'm not proposing we schedule special meetings, but we can look at the calendar and make those decisions as necessary.
How do we approve them, though? This resolution is saying council approval.
Right, 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 right.
So if he's notified of an event that's happening next week, how does he get all of council's approval to attend that event?
So the events that we're talking about are items that are sponsored, well, this depends on which item we're talking about, but there's events that are sponsored by the city.
Right.
That are sponsored by the city. The other ones that are sponsored by third-party entities still provides for the opportunity for the mayor's attendance with approval by council. If he wishes to be reimbursed, if there's no reimbursement, then there's, or maybe none necessary even, then there's no specific need to ask.
So he is not restricted from attending TML events, conferences, things of that nature?
We don't have, we don't have the power to do that. That's not in, right?
Okay. And then any events he does attend, it will require reimbursement? Not, because the standard is the city pays for our hotel, the city pays for our registration, and...
If council approves it, if we voted it through, then even the city would pay for those as well. It wouldn't require reimbursement if the city was paying for it.
If we do it ahead of time?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Just want to make sure that he's clear on what restrictions he has. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, I feel compelled to address the bully comment. I mean, I suppose the bully is in the eye of the beholder, but I would ask the audience to think about, you know, who is the bully? Is it the group of, this is the group of people who... Who's the bully here? Is it the person who, is it the group who decided that one of their own, who most of them supported in the office that he now has attained, has decided, has seen that due to a call, an accusation of financial malfeasance, that something needed to be done, we needed to investigate and find out the truth, who's the bully? Is it the people who asked for the truth, or is it the person who defiantly says, "I will tell you what's there. I will tell you what I did and didn't do, and you are required to trust me"? Now, of course, that was accompanied with a number of lies. Councilmember Kirkland says 15 in 15 minutes. I didn't count, but who's the bully there? Who has, who's been found guilty by the Ethics Commission of interfering with this investigation into financial malfeasance because he would not provide information that he had that was pertinent to that investigation? He ignores them. They said he was wrong. We say he was wrong. Who's the bully here? I was asked for information similar just before this investigation happened. Actually, it was right about the time the mayor was elected. And it included any and all communication that I had with certain council members. It included my phone records, personal and otherwise, not my official city business phone records, all phone records. So what, and this was, this was freedom of information, so this was not an investigation into financial malfeasance. This was just, I guess, somebody who was curious. So what did I do? I provided that information. I went through an entire year's worth of text messages, read them all, anything that was close to city business, because as our attorney points out, and in this training that we get every year, that city business is meant to be interpreted very liberally. So that's what I did. I gave anything that could be close to the city attorney, let him go through it, and he took some of it out because he decided it was not city business, but that's okay. Some of these were personal in nature, you know, things that I wouldn't necessarily want. Are you, yeah, that's a good idea. Some of these were personal in nature, that, you know, you wouldn't want everybody to see what you wrote, you know, when you said something funny, or, you know, it was funny at the time, and you read it a year later, it doesn't sound so funny anymore. Maybe somebody could interpret it the wrong way. That's how the cookie crumbles. I sent it, because that's what the law requires me to do, and that's what my obligation to sit on this dais requires me to do. Add to that the financial side of it, and so he's got two reasons he needs to do it. He still has that information. He still refuses to provide it. I am all for forgiveness, but forgiveness has to come from fixing the problem that you created that you're asking for the forgiveness to begin with.
Thank you, sir. The, sometimes what is described as bullying and threatening is someone attempting to defend themselves against unwarranted attacks. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. I just have a really quick statement, because I know y'all are tired. We're all tired. This has been long and painful, right? But the words grace and mercy were used tonight, and my responsibility is for the grace and the mercy of the citizens of this town. That's where my grace and mercy lies, not with the person who has been found guilty of a violation of ethics, but it's for you. That's where grace and mercy comes in.
Thank you so much for your comments and your passion in dealing with all things municipal. We have a motion and we have a second. I apologize, I have the motion, personally who made the motion, I did not hear who provided the second. Okay.
I did the second.
I got you. Motion by Councilmember Meyer, the second by Mayor Protem Kirkland. Seeing no indication of further discussion, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. We'll move on to item five. Before we do that, thank y'all all for your participation, and y'all are certainly welcome to continue sitting in here when we go into executive session. Item 5A, city council shall convene to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 5.087. Can y'all, as y'all are leaving, can y'all kind of hold it down a little bit? We're still conducting a meeting. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. To seek the legal, the advice of legal counsel regarding a 380 agreement with Valverde Development. Item 5B, city council shall convene to close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.087, to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding a 380 agreement with PRC 01 Bastrop LLC, Pearl River Cinderell Development. It is 8:18. We're in executive session. It is 8:52, and council is back in open session. Relative to items 5A and 5B, there will be no action required. We will move on to the next agenda item, which is adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. In a second, we stand adjourned.